Okay. Call this meeting to order, the Gladstone City Council adjourned meeting slash work session for January 6, 2015. The first order of business is to request the seated city councilors select a temporary council member to run the meeting until Mayor-elect Jacobellus takes the oath of office. Are there any nominations?
I move to nominate Tom Mercero to run the meeting.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Do that.
Those in favor of Counselor Mercero?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none? Counselor Mercero, will you please get the meeting started? Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Yep.
Counselor Reisner?
Yep.
Counselor Sickman?
Yep.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
And I would like to have people stand for the flag salute.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cool.
But at least would the judge love to...
I would love to swear if he could.
Let me swear.
So where is Dominic Jacobellus? Oh, okay. Stand over here. Hi. My name is Linda Belief. Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
To raise your right hand, I Dominic Jacobellus.
I Dominic Jacobellus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And municipal code.
And municipal code.
Of the city of Gladstone.
Of the city of Gladstone.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the mayor.
Of the mayor.
For the city of Gladstone.
For the city of Gladstone.
Oregon.
Oregon.
During my entire term.
During my entire term.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I can have Patrick McMahon, Steve Johnson, and Kim Sickman?
Tom, you've already been replaced. That was short tenure.
Okay, so for the three of you, I'm going to swear you all in at the same time, but I'm going to say aye and then I'm going to say your name.
You were mayor for about three minutes.
And you would each individually say whatever name you choose to say. Aye, say your name.
Say your name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And municipal code.
And municipal code.
Of the city of Gladstone.
Of the city of Gladstone.
And that I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
As city counselor.
Of city counselor.
For the city of Gladstone.
For the city of Gladstone.
Oregon.
Oregon.
During my entire term.
During my entire term.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome to the club.
Now you're in charge.
If there's anything else you want to say.
Now I do.
Glad to fly this salute. We had elections. Okay. You ready to start?
Business. Business. No, we need to do the election of the president.
Oh, okay. We're going to take time now to elect a president for the council. I'll just open it up for the council members. Anybody want to nominate someone for the duties of the president?
I'd like to nominate Tom Mercero.
I'll second that.
We need to take a vote? Is that what happens next? Yep?
If there are no other nominations, yes, you take a vote.
No other nominations? Okay, let's vote.
Or...
Or you do it? Sorry, folks, this is going to take a while. Iron out all these little details.
Well, you do it voice. You could do it by, you could call for a voice vote where everybody would just say, you know, aye or nay. Or you could ask for a roll call vote where they would go down the, Jolene would go down the line and record everyone's vote.
Okay, roll call vote.
Okay. Counselor Nelson?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Sickman?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobellus?
Yes. Okay. And now we're going to turn to any business from the audience. Anyone want to speak? You come up, say your name and address and tell us what's on your mind and we go from there. No business from the audience at this time? All right, we're going to move to the consent agenda. There's two items on the consent agenda for this month and sure we all read our packets on what they are. Resolution 1047 and resolution 1048.
I move that we approve consent of resolution 1047 and resolution 1048.
Second. Okay, at this time I think we're going to call for another roll call vote.
Okay. Counselor Nelson?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Sickman?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobellus?
Yes.
What happens now?
Correspondence. Do we have to read the correspondence? No, we just mentioned that they're out. There's two of them.
We usually just acknowledge receipts of the correspondence.
But I do have a question on item number seven, the letter from the Oregon City Tri-City, or regarding the Tri-City Service District. I know that was sent back a few weeks ago, at least it was emailed to me, and I was curious if there's been any other activity in the last couple of months that we might, you know, be updated on.
Sure. Mayor-elect at the time, Mayor-elect Jacobellus and myself had met a couple of weeks ago with the Oregon City City Manager, one of their attorneys, and their mayor-elect, Dan Holliday, talking to us about the items in the letter. They are going to want the city of Gladstone to chime in on this. Again, for the audience, the letter concerns the governance of the Tri-City Sewer District and Mayor Jacobellus and I have spoken since that meeting. And we think the best course of action may be to invite them to a future city council meeting and invite Clackamas County officials to a future city council meeting so city council can get a sense of where both the parties are and what makes sense for the city of Gladstone moving forward. So that's where we sit right now.
Well, I'm still interested in putting forth the idea that I had several months ago in all four entities sitting down in kind of a round table, or in this case probably a square being that there's four sides, and discuss this and other issues that we might be having with the sewer service.
Right. Well, you know, that's something I could explore with the mayor. We could ask for a joint meeting with county officials, Westland officials, and Gladstone City Council. So that is something we could ask for.
You know, what me and Pete had talked about was it seems to us, or at least to me from that conversation, that Clackamas County and Oregon City are kind of in a butting heads kind of mode. And if, my feeling was, and I know Pete kind of agrees, but what we need to talk about is if that four-party roundtable just becomes this, you know, continuation of that and we don't get anything out of it. Kind of what I thought about just sitting down with the county commission alone is getting their version of what they're putting out there that is probably contrary to what Oregon City's saying, so we'd have a good sense of where they're at and maybe almost, in a sense, act as kind of a mediator and say, well, I see this side, I see that side, where can we find something that we can work with? As opposed to just, you know, going to battle stations and suing each other. And then after that, then maybe sitting down with the four parties and say, okay, we've heard the sides, we've got the information, this is where we think we could go.
Well, this is an area to that. Only thing that I am, I guess, curious or concerned about is, you know, we sit down with Oregon City, we sit down with the county, Westland's probably doing the same thing. And you're getting information that is being piecemealed. And what, we might be sitting down with the county and get different information, and then they sit down with Westland and it might be a little different. I'm not saying that it's going to be, you know, totally opposite, but if all four entities are in the same room talking about the same thing, and I understand the adversarial, but I also feel that, you know, we're adults and I would hope that they would act that way and that we, you know, can work things out.
Do we have a consensus from council as how we'd like to proceed? My, again, my idea was to invite Oregon City in, to fill us in on their point of view, and then Clackamas County.
Would this...
Counselor Reisner is another option that could be feasible.
Would it be executive session or open?
It would be open to the public.
Okay.
It doesn't fit into any of the exemptions under the code or under the state statute.
I don't, like I say, I don't have really any issue with sitting down chatting with them, but I would like to see, I think, at least, you know, before this, hopefully before it, you know, gets out of hand, is all four entities get together sooner than later. And I, at a Clackamas Cities Association dinner earlier this year, had talked with a couple of councilors from Westland that were receptive to doing that also. So it's not, it's not a new idea and nor is it, you know, something that I've cooked up myself.
I think they both, both ways would have merit. If the session went well, I think it could be more productive if everybody sat down at the same table and had some discussion. But we might want to check with the other parties and, I mean, that would be the way I would lean, but I don't know that all the other parties involved would have the same thoughts that I do or that Neil does, that that would be the best way to handle it. So I think maybe start a conversation with all the entities and see what they think about it, and if they're all in favor of it, then I think it might be a good thing to proceed forward that way with.
I do have a new request for a meeting from Oregon City with whoever the new, now it'll be Counselor Mercero, Mayor Jacobellus, and myself to meet with them again. Maybe that could be the time to see if we can gain some traction on that group, you know, the full group meeting.
I've got a question, Pete. You've probably been involved more than this and anyone else on the council it has been. The flavor, the tenor of their relationship, do you believe it would lend itself to this kind of thing at this time, to a four-group meeting?
I hate to speak for someone else, but there is, as most of you know, Clack, or not Clackamas County, but the Tri-City Sewer Service District is suing Oregon City over right-of-way, their right-of-way fee ordinance. So that is still out there. This topic, the governance structure of the Tri-City Service District, you know, that's a separate topic, although I'm sure some of those emotions play into it as well from the suit. Yeah, I don't know. The folks I deal with at Oregon City and the folks I deal with at Clackamas County, they're all very professional people, so I would think they could put aside those emotions and talk about this critically and hopefully come to some consensus. But again, that's my speculation.
Two questions. One, approximately, if we got everybody together, how many people would be there trying to communicate?
Well, I'm not sure how many people sit on the, on the Oregon City City Council or the Westland City Council. Is it five?
I believe so. I believe both of theirs.
Both are five.
Five. And then there's five at the county.
So seventeen and then five with the county plus the administrators, the county administrator and the city manager in Oregon City. And most likely there would be some attorneys in tow also.
My second question is how do they...
Why not?
Why do they, how are they keeping the minutes? Is it a video/audio type session?
Well, it would be a public meeting, so we would be required to keep minutes. We're not required to videotape the meeting, but there does need to be some audio recording of the meeting. So it depends on the venue where we have it. I don't know if the county or Oregon City or Westland has a venue that's large enough to accommodate that many people and record the meeting. There is a possibility we could do it at the senior center and rent some equipment for the night to make that recording. So those logistics can be overcome.
Would it make sense to start with something smaller than a quorum? You know, if it's Mayor Jacobellus?
Well, they originally had asked last summer to meet with this onesie-twosie, which I was not comfortable with doing, and I, and as far as I know, none of us from Gladstone participated in that. And again, it was, because I felt when you're, when you're meeting in small numbers like that, information isn't going to be as fluid. And like I say, you know, I'm just afraid this is going to get out of hand and also being that we are partners, all four entities are partners in this, that we, you know, we should be working, trying to work together and so coming together, I think would be, I mean, on the surface it sounds would be, you know, not necessarily the easiest, but the cleanest way to do it, but logistic-wise, as you're starting to count heads and it could be, you know, it could be troublesome and...
Even if we could get, you know, the mayors for each city, the board chair from Clackamas County, and the city managers, administrators, and maybe the council presidents, you know, that would still be a fairly large group, but maybe it would facilitate a little more conversation, at least in the beginning.
Well, I would say maybe at, yeah, maybe the four entities get together like you suggest and then later maybe everybody, or it might not, we might not need to. Maybe, you know...
Right.
But it appears that what meetings have happened so far, you know, haven't really gone very far. And I know maybe that's because they're pleniminary. I don't know. But like I say, there's the underlying lawsuit and I just hope that it doesn't get out of hand. So that's why I, you know, have found that talking, keeping the information flowing and if we can just get everybody together so you don't have the, you know, finger pointing and, well, no, he said this last week, now he's saying this, kind of stuff.
Right, right. Well, I think what I'll do to proceed if it meets council's approval is to, we do have the request for a meeting with Oregon City, with Mayor Jacobellus and Counselor Mercero. Go ahead and book that meeting. Talk about our idea of bringing all the parties together with certain representation and see if it plays with Oregon City and then get word out to Westland and Clackamas County and see if we can make that happen.
I like that.
Does that...
Is that the way you guys want to proceed? Pat, what do you think? I think that'd be fine. It's, I don't see it as a super important issue to get going with like a huge meeting yet. I think we have some other things that are going to be more important to take care of in the next six months, especially the library, to at least figure out what we're doing with that. This is just a proposed rate increase over a five-year period and longer, I understand that, so it's not like it's this big, huge thing that we have to do right now. So I agree that maybe just the first, start talking with Oregon City, see what, see what they're saying, and then go to Clackamas County, see what they're saying, and step it up from there.
Okay. Thanks, Pete.
I think that Oregon City's arguments have merit and I think we should meet with them. I think that's a good idea.
One thing that came in the last few months is the people in the back can't hear if we don't bring these up forward when we talk. So if you're going to make a statement, bring it up as close so they can pick it up back there.
Thanks. Lynn, you got anything to add on this?
No.
Tom?
I think Neil's pretty well covered all the bases.
All right.
The only reason I asked the questions was if you get a group of people, thirty people, their, the communication would be limited from pinning off the people yelling and the people that won't talk because they're not going to be heard, so I think the...
You're right. There's some truth to that.
I think the short session first and...
So that's the consensus, Pete. Just go ahead and, let's do Oregon City and then work on Clackamas after that and then we'll report back to these guys and go from there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. All right. We're recessing to a work session.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is a carryover from the last meeting. As I believe everyone is aware, we were, we've been talking about facilities, in particular the city hall and police station. The consensus at the time was to set up some sort of a citizen advisory committee to city council. We went back and forth a little bit on what that committee should look like, who should be on that committee. I've tried to reformulate the staff note to focus on what city council had said before, new construction, how should it be financed. We talked about a nine-citizen committee with some staff and other, other folks that can lend support to the committee to help them make a decision. Knowing that there are, you know, three new folks seated on the council now, I believe it's appropriate to open up the discussion to get those points of view so we can determine what the council, or what this advisory committee should look like and look at the scope of work. What should they be focusing on? And I think we also need to discuss the timeline. We talked about shooting for, I believe, the May election, which would mean that the committee would need to complete its work by February 13th in order to get ballot language together for city council to consider in time. So it's, it's an aggressive timeline, but, you know, I figure we should open it up, get these new opinions, and try to come to consensus.
Okay, I'll start it off. I think one thing that we need, one person that we need on this advisory committee will be somebody from the police department, whoever they choose, that can bring their needs forward rather than just ignore it and have citizens doing it. They need to be part of this package so the chief can decide who he wants the representative to be and then we go from there.
Pete, maybe you could run down the layout of what's been discussed as far as, I believe last month we made some, came to a consensus on the layout of the committee.
Right.
Maybe that would help the new guys understand what the layout.
Sure.
Is currently, and then we can maybe adjust from there.
Right. So my understanding of the consensus at the last meeting was that we talked about nine citizens at large who would comprise, basically comprise the advisory committee. They would all have a vote and other folks we talked about having at the meetings in a support role to those nine citizens. We talked about a member of law enforcement. It could be internal to our police department. We talked about someone representing the court or city hall, a planning commission member, someone from the library board, because part of the proposal could be to combine city hall or the city hall and police department with the library under one roof.
I think it's important you have all these people on there because they're going to bring to the table their needs, what those particular departments are going to need in this package. And if we ignore them and let the citizens do it, they may miss some, especially like the police department, they may miss some parts there and the library too.
Right.
Those are things we need to know going into this thing.
Right.
They're important players in this.
Right. We also talked about a representative from the fire department.
That too.
Being that location of the police department could have some effect on emergency services. So that's, that's my understanding of the consensus from the last meeting.
A question, Pete?
Yes.
Those nine, nine citizens, are they the only voting members of this committee?
That was the consensus, yes.
So the rest are purely in an advisory role? They will not be voting?
They're there to provide information and support the committee in its duties.
Okay. There was also discussion of somebody from the school district. Has that now been dropped?
I didn't hear a lot of support from that from council at the last meeting.
I don't see why.
The reason I had initially included them is because they do have experience in larger construction projects, but I wasn't getting feedback from council, so I dropped that.
So initially there would not be somebody from the school district? I happen to agree with that, but if that was found to be something that was valuable, that person could be added in the future?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
I don't think so.
So I've got a couple of questions and the timeline you have is, it's not feasible. If you wanted a report by February 23rd, the date you picked, and we don't have a committee yet, so I think we're, I think we're starting down the wrong path. My question, I wasn't here at the December meeting, the November meeting, there was some confusion on double majorities. Did we, I think that the attorney and the mayor and you all had differing opinions on the days and years.
So it's, it's my understanding, and we've confirmed this with our city attorney and we had asked staff at the election, county elections office, that if we hit the May election or the November election, the double majority rule would not come into play.
Okay, so I would first say then we, that we should just scrap the May and shoot for November, number one, just because of time constraints. And then, then maybe talk with the county and are we under time constraints to when we need to start work on the library as far as break, is there some more time constraints now that we've passed the ballot measure?
Well, we are right now negotiating an IGA with Clackamas County regarding the new construction and their, their contribution towards that. No one's discussed a timeline yet. The current IGA does not have a timeline in the IGA, so it's, it would be a new provision if it's brought up. I do know that Clackamas County does want to move forward on this. They...
It's pretty clear that we do now and the city does, so it's just a matter of, it makes a lot more sense to me right now is to at least go to the November general election if that's still the double majority to give us time to get a committee together and do a thorough job.
I think if you go November, you'll have a better, complete package.
Yeah.
Than if you hurry it and try to hit May. You end up making, with maybe not as perfect a package and people may not vote for it. If you got all the information in there and it's a nice, complete package and it looks doable, then the people will vote for it.
Can, just for clarification... Can, just for clarification, the committee, we've decided that the committee is good the way it stands. We kinda jumped on to something else. So where are we with the committee? What was your understanding of that, Pete?
Well, I'm not hearing anyone requesting any additional members to the committee. I'm hearing consensus right now that it looks good as written.
How about the organization of that committee? Is there gonna be a chairperson? Are they gonna be, how are they gonna be organized?
Right. The, there was a suggestion at the last City Council meeting from one of the councilors that they elect a chairperson, and I've included that in the staff note, so that's part of the proposal right now.
And I guess I'm, can just run the, run the first group of people, you have that law enforcement, court, and/or city staff, planning member, library, fire, School District was still a question mark?
We've ruled that out.
Scratch that one.
So, yeah, what I have is a planning commission member, a library board member, someone from administration, which, you know, could be court or City Hall, City Hall staff, someone from the Police Department, library, and fire, along with nine citizen voting members.
One question I have on that, Pete, is on the planning commission member.
Mm-hmm.
Everything, everybody else on this list is pretty much staff. Shouldn't planning, shouldn't we maybe have our city planner, rather than a, if this side's gonna be staff, and they're gonna be feeding information to the committee to make decisions on, should that be a staff person also?
Why can't it be chairman of the planning commission?
Boy, it could be. I'm just questioning...
Why, you say they're not qualified?
No, no, I'm not.
I think a lot of those people are.
I'm just saying, but they're also a resident, and they could be considered a voting member, a voting member of it.
Well, I think City Council could classify that person if it was a planning commission, a planning commissioner, as a non-voting member.
Well, I guess that's where I'm kinda going with it.
And they're in advisory role, just like Police Department, Fire Department.
Having the planner, we contract with Clackamas County for the planning services, there would be an expense to that. We'd have to pay the person for his time being here, and we would have to make sure the meetings are scheduled at such a time that person can't attend, but it is doable. I, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, my personal preference would be to have one of the planning commissioners themselves. I think we have several that are very qualified and very knowledgeable about the planning code, or the zoning code.
Maybe for...
It had nothing to do, it wasn't, it had nothing to do with our planning commissioners' qualifications. It more had to do with, in order to be on the planning commission, they are a community member, and if they are a community member, they may want, they may prefer to have a voting right on it, rather than an advisory role.
And I think there's nothing, at least right now, that would prevent any planning commissioner from submitting an application to be one of the nine citizens at law or Charleston.
If they were on the committee, a planning commissioner, and a library advisory board member, were part of that nine, would that then be fewer advisors? I mean, they would be on the committee? Or would we still need a planning commission member and a library board member?
There's two, you're representing two different things, in my opinion. In one, you are, you are...
Strictly there for the planning guidance.
Right. And you're not promoting, you're advising and giving information. The other side of it, you are accepting information and making a decision based on the information, similar to what we've got going here. We have staff over there that is feeding us information, and then we make a decision on it. And so I see these as two different, two different entities.
One thing, I was just gonna offer, with respect to the planning commissioner, this kinda came up, I think, the last go-around as well, with the library. One thing we wanna be aware of is just the whole ex parte contact issue, and, you know, it's very likely that, it doesn't mean the person couldn't attend and be part of the meetings and advise, that's okay. It's just, what I would recommend, if it is gonna be a planning commissioner in that advisory role, that we, you know, take copious, I'm assuming the normal route of, would you be doing it with a, with a, that would be a public meeting, you're planning on having it, right? So, okay, so you'd have audio, probably? I'm thinking here, because what's gonna happen eventually, assuming that proposal gets in front of the planning commission? That planning commissioner is gonna have to say, hey, you know, I took part in a lot of these meetings, I gained a lot of information from that, I need to disclose that on the record. And it would be a lot easier to say, and here's basically everything that we discussed.
It would depend where we have the meetings. At the library advisory committee meeting, we did not do audio recordings or video.
Just minutes?
Just minutes of the meeting. You know, it's easy to record in this room, but when you're going to the senior center or somewhere else...
Not having a P A.
There is a pretty large expense involved in renting that recording equipment.
Can we take some...
Well, I was gonna ask a comment in regards to, if we have a professional planner that's giving information, like we will have, you know, a professional from the, a Police Department, from the City Hall staff, Fire Department, that, you know, does it five days a week, eight hours a day, forty hours type of thing, I think it's going to be able to provide quicker and more accurate information than a member of the planning commission.
But you gotta work with his schedule, that's the problem. He's working forty hours a week, and now you're gonna take, hey, we need you, so we're gonna have to adjust our people to his schedule, which doesn't seem fair.
Well, then maybe we need to get somebody else as our planning department. That's a whole different issue. Sorry.
All right. We taking any comments from the audience?
Usually at work sessions, we don't take comment from the audience, but...
Oh, okay. Right. We could...
Okay. We're gonna go to an adjourned meeting, then you can tell us.
You know, the other question is, is the planning commission chair, could they be considered staff?
Well, I don't know if they'd be considered staff, but they would be, they could be considered, you know, an expert in the field, and provide that advice in that capacity.
And I would like to recommend that we allow, even though this is a work session, allow the planning commission chair to speak if she wishes, because I think she may have some vital input on this exact thing that we're discussing.
Sure. You good with that? All right. Please.
Sorry, it really wasn't that important.
Well, Tammy, it better be good.
Tammy Stumpel, Planning Commission. The only thing I was gonna state was, if a planning commission person was on this committee, the simple option is to just recuse yourself from any decision that revolve around a specific project. So unless you're gonna put five planning commission members on this committee, if you're just gonna do one, I don't think that's gonna be a big issue.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I think the only issue there is, it's always nice to have an odd number. You know, we ran into that with, you know, it happens in various contexts. It actually happened with, you know, Councilor Sickman the last time. It's not the end of the world. I don't mean to make a bigger deal out of it than it is. It really isn't that. I just wanna be sure that we're aware of that.
It's come up in the past in other instances, so it's something to be aware of. But I think it's really important that a planning commission person be involved in this, because we're at the point where we're re-looking at our codes and ordinances, and if there's things that we need to consider changing, that's where this would be an important step.
Well, you always have Clay to fall back on, if you have a question that you don't have the answer for, you can contact Clay and say, well, we're not sure about this, what's the county's decision on...
Well, don't we have to be cognizant of the cost, though? Because this isn't, hasn't gone before the...
For attorneys.
A vote yet? I mean, we're limited on how much money we can spend.
Day, per hour.
Isn't that correct?
Yeah. The City Council had interpreted the charter amendments, but, you know, the intent is to keep the cost down as much as possible and get voters enough information to make an educated decision. And, you know, there's some play in what's a reasonable amount to spend, but anywhere we can shave the cost, we should.
Okay. That's all I had, unless you guys have any questions for me, but, you know, I think if it's an issue of recusing yourself would be the simplest.
And that's if it got to that point. And I don't think it would. I think it's just a matter of, you know, if we go through that process, there is a planning commission member, and I do agree with you, I think it would be beneficial, that we're just being aware that if and when the proposal gets from the planning commission, that we're essentially doing like a record dump, you know?
Right.
There would just be, you know, if it were, let's just say it were you, you know, if you were there, you were the one, you would have that disclosure that we'd always have to go through and say, I attended these meetings, this is what we talked about, and by the way, here are the minutes of all of those meetings, I'm putting them in the record, anybody got a problem? You know, we can deal with it.
Right.
I just don't want it, you know, a lot of my, a lot of my role is sometimes anticipating a question that might come up later and thinking, David, why didn't you tell us that? We wouldn't have done it that way if we had known it was gonna be this hard. So that's all. I don't think it's gonna be a big issue.
Okay. I just don't want it to be a hurdle to stop planning commission persons.
And I think you're right. I think having that individual, whether it's you or somebody else, that can say, well, this is what we're looking at, you're thinking about this, we probably need to change this, or, you know, be aware of this.
This is a perfect time.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
It really is. That's it? Okay. Sorry, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tammy.
One thing I want just to bring up, and I kinda mentioned this a couple of months ago when we had the City Council meeting, and something we ought to consider. We've got a schedule for a two-day retreat for all of us to sit down. The thought process is, is that we could sit down, start fresh, set some priorities, set some goals, set some benchmarks, timelines, and I'm just wondering if we just can pump the brakes on this for just a bit, on this advisory committee? Because we already know it's gonna cost a little bit of money to do it, who knows how much it's gonna cost staff time. If, in fact, we get done in, you know, after those two days and this falls down three notches on the priority list, we're devoting a lot of the staff time to get this thing up and running. And I just think we need, it'd be nice just to get this, and this may become priority number two. I'm not saying it isn't, but I'm saying at least give us that chance. We've already, I think we can agree that November's a better timeline than May. So we've got that little bit of built-in time, why don't we just wait after we're done with our two-day retreat, we can have a better feel for where we're at, we even can talk about this more, and then we say, okay, we're gonna devote X amount of time to doing this. It's a commitment, commitment. It's priority number three on our list, let's get it done. That's kinda what I think.
I agree.
Comment, Mayor, based on that? As of 2:30 yesterday afternoon, there were all of six applicants for this committee. Out of those six applicants, if two of those were appointed, they would be on three committees, which is something that we've tried to avoid. One of the applicant is a city employee who is also a resident, that's never come up before, and would probably require some more discussion. So that's what we're looking at as of 2:30 yesterday afternoon.
I think there's a whole lot of pieces to this. I've said, ever since this committee got brought up, that we're putting the cart in front of the horse, because there's a lot of information that we don't have access to right now. We're requesting that information, but it's not in. I don't have a problem with forming a committee and laying out, you know, who should be on the committee, and having a procedure for it, because that's just gonna fall into place later, no matter when we do this. If this falls to priority five, as soon as we get done with four, if this portion of it's already done, we know we're gonna have nine people on the committee, this is gonna be the support staff. We've received applications from six people, from sixty people, and we're gonna pick these nine to do it. I think we should leave the, continue to take applications until we actually are ready to form a committee, but I don't think it's wrong to have the guidelines and everything ready and in place, so when we do form the committee, when we do have the information for the committee, we're ready to go.
There is one more piece of information I need to give City Council. If you remember, there was a new grant that was out there to do seismic rehabilitation of police departments. We've been awarded that grant, $380,000. We're going to have to, and I need to check the timeline, but we're going to have to either accept that grant or reject it. That money cannot be used for new construction, so it could only be used on the current Police Department. So that needs to play into our thinking about the timeline also. And we have been getting by with patching the roof on this building, well, and the Police Department.
This is seismic, only not the roof, though, right?
Right. The seismic grant can be used for seismic upgrades, but there are also going to be city expenses related to that if we take the grant and seismically upgrade the Police Department. So there could be a number of items that, you know, we'd have to get with an engineer and figure out what would be the city cost and what would be covered under the grant. But, yeah, you're right, there would be some city costs involved also.
What is the timeline on accepting that grant? And...
I need to, I don't have that information with me right now. I need to...
And then also, while you're checking on that, if we accept that grant, and six months down the road, we've decided we're moving forward with this, we've got something going on the ballot, can that be returned? Without penalties?
Well, what I'm thinking, too, Kim, is that if, okay, so we get the grant, and the Police Department's gonna be in that facility for another four years before we get this whole thing completed, and, you know, build new buildings and get them moved, can we take the grant and upgrade it so that the officers that are working underneath this are safe for at least four years, or whatever the timeframe is? This isn't gonna happen overnight with this police and fire, I mean, police and library and City Hall. It's gonna take us some time once we get the approval. You know, I hate to see these guys underneath a facility that's not safe, whether they're there for one year, two years, or five years, it's still, they're having, they're in a, well, same with you guys right here, in an unsafe structure. I hate to go to somebody's door and knock and say, I'm sorry, but your husband died because we didn't do anything with the building. And, you know, that's how I look at it. This isn't gonna happen overnight, so we need to make sure that they can get their facility safe for whatever the timeframe is.
I think that Councilor Sickman asks a good question. These grants often do have conditions about return. I understand what you're saying, Councilor Nelson, but it's a good technical question, and I would like an answer to that as well, what the penalties are for doing that.
We can have, get City Council a copy of the grant information next week.
All right. So getting back to the committee, where are we at? I mean, can we, can we decide we're gonna have a committee, and when are we gonna start it? And are we gonna keep taking applications for, to a due date, when we're gonna close it, and then pick people, or...
I think we should take applications again for another month.
Well, it's gonna, when is the due date? Or is...
I believe the cutoff for the applications is this week, so we could include them in the packet next week.
Tomorrow.
Till tomorrow.
It was in the newsletter, yeah, tomorrow.
So we could open it up for another month.
You say we've only got six now?
Yes, yesterday at 2:30, we had six, yes.
And it closes next week.
Closes tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes.
We might be in trouble.
That was my point.
All right. So if we, if we open it up for another month, is there any problem with that, saying now we're gonna extend this for another month? We didn't fill our quota, we don't have enough qualified people, whatever it is, we're okay doing for another month?
We're gonna shoot for November, I'd say. We got plenty of time.
All right. Everybody, everybody good with that?
One thing I wanted to mention.
No, you can't.
[laughing].
I was the advocate for going for the May election. And there was a reason for that. I wanted to get something done, so we could, in fact, get some accomplishment this year. I want the proceedings to go on perfectly, if possible, to get a good advisory committee together. However, there's another piece of time we haven't mentioned in there. You know, we've gotta get the advisory committee, we've gotta have the meetings, and we gotta get them to make some agreements, some recommendations to us, okay? But there's another piece of time to help educate the public for the vote. So that's gonna take some time, too. Now, whether we say one month's enough, two months, three months, whatever, okay? I just would like to keep that in the, when you're thinking about the time, there's another piece in there. That's, just educating the city's not too bad of a deal.
We wanna get to yes, if we can.
Right. Okay, so how do we, how do we close this? Are we all gonna agree that we're gonna repost this for another month?
Well, in the work session, we can't make a decision. But if we adjourn the work session and now go to the adjourned meeting, I have another agenda item on the same topic where city council could make a decision.
All right. Before I close the work session, everybody's submitted, everybody's okay with us? All right.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm closing, I'm closing the work session, and now we're going to adjourn.
Back to the adjourned.
We return to an adjourned meeting, I'm sorry.
All right. So we have the same agenda items, so if council would like to make a motion and vote, we can do so. There are.
Does it actually require a motion?
I don't think it does. I understand what the consensus of council is on the committee makeup. The scope of work, it sounds like city council wants to have some more discussion on that topic. And I think I understand the consensus as far as which election cycle we want to hit.
November.
November. So I don't know if there's a vote that needs to be taken. Council can take one if it so chooses, but I don't.
I'll make a motion. I'll throw a motion out there that we shoot for the November election. That'll give us time to put together a good package that'll be acceptable for the citizens of Gladstone.
And your motion includes also the committee makeup?
Right, yeah, but.
Discuss.
Yeah, so that we can have some work time in there.
And extending, extending the application process for another month?
Yeah, we can do that also.
I'll second that.
All right, let's do a voice vote.
All in favor, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
You got it.
Oh, gotta hit this thing.
First time.
First time.
With authority. I know.
All right.
So we know what we have to do.
So, now we go, any business, any business from the council?
Tom, anything?
Anything for me?
Neil, anything?
Actually, I was going to ask, I saw that Pete had, for next week, we're gonna have a executive session. I'm assuming that's gonna be before the regular session?
I was planning on having the executive session at 7:00 PM.
So, I was, maybe we could, maybe start a little earlier, 'cause I'd like to do, if possible, because we have new members on the, on the council. In the last couple of years, it's taken council seven, eight months to get your evaluation done. But I'd like to maybe get it started, just to discuss, if there's nothing else to discuss next week.
Okay.
Maybe add that to.
Pat, how's that work with your schedule? I don't know.
My schedule is so in my hands, I can do whatever I want.
Oh, okay. I was thinking, if we go earlier?
No.
Okay.
I'm like retired. It's almost like being retired, my schedule.
Okay.
That's what I see.
All right, Pat, you got anything?
So that's all.
Happy New Year, everybody.
I have two things. One, there was some posts on public media sites in Gladstone talking about the Tiger Lake Oswego Water Partnership site, their work site, where they're putting in the building. So I went down there and I took a quick look at it today. And I was on the planning commission when it was approved, and I'm going, this just doesn't look right. So I went home and I grabbed my old packets and books and started going through it. I found some things that I thought were discrepancies, in my opinion. I come down, I talked to Assistant Administrator Morishida, she called the city planner, and he sent me some documents. I reviewed them, I highlighted some things in there, sent them back to him along with some pictures. He responded back to me that he would like to meet me down there at 10 o'clock tomorrow, to have some discussion. He's already sent an email to the person he was working with in the planning process, going, why doesn't this look like what you presented to the planning commission?
Well, that was one of the things I talked to, one of the people that were working on a road project down there, and she said that they had told her that they were doing the facade of the building so it would match the neighborhood. It doesn't look anything like it.
Well, and that's.
It's not very pretty.
There are certain things in the design review.
Yeah.
That we're gonna be, I'm gonna discuss with Clay tomorrow.
Yeah, maybe when the gate's up, which I think they're gonna put up.
Yeah.
That might hide some of it, but it's still there.
I don't know. I don't even have enough information to make a decision. It was just, it didn't look.
Yeah, it's not pretty.
Quite right to me.
No.
So we're gonna have some discussion, and staying in contact with city staff on it, and we'll figure out what's going on, and.
Good job.
If there's anything that's gonna happen, or if not. The only other thing I had was the new business license applications come out, and I've had a lot of feedback from local business owners. I've been called a lot of names. The fees have went up considerably, not, that they're not justified.
From where to where?
Not that this doesn't bring them up to a reasonable, but there is a lot of people that I've talked to, and I know that city staff has fielded several questions on them. So I kinda mentioned, 'cause a lot of times I hear, well, as a business owner, what are we gonna get for this? And so I made, talked to Pete a little bit about maybe seeing if some of the increased money could be spent on something that would benefit the business owners. And I don't know what that would look like.
From two, what's the?
Well, I've got a few examples. One example went up 12,000 percent.
No, I'm asking for dollars.
Don't give me percentages, I'm asking for dollars. One example went from, that example was from 35 to $450.
Okay.
Okay? That's not, $450 equated over a 12-month period is not that much money. But it's a huge, for their, when they look at it, well, I paid $35 last year, now it's 450.
Don't you agree that 35 is a little bit low as far as running the city?
I have no argument with that.
That's what provides money for the city to operate.
And I've spoke to these people at great length, explaining and doing some breakdowns with them. I said, you know, here's what it is, and they're going, okay, well, what benefit is it to us, other than including, than increasing the general fund that the city coffers?
Like, we got a lot of extra money. We don't.
So, and that was just, and so I just wanted to kinda throw that out there for maybe later discussion, on if there was anything there, and that probably needs to put on our priority list. It's probably not number one. But I just wanted to mention that, 'cause since in the last month, there's been a lot of discussion out there on it. That's all I got.
Can I make one little comment on that? I think just a notification would have been nice. I didn't know mine was going up. If, you know, I've always thought for years it should have gone up, that it was inexpensive. But mine went up 125 percent. And it's still not a lot, but just at least a notice that it was gonna go up, and sort of be aware of it a little bit. That was all. You know, I opened it up, and I thought, oh, okay, well, it went up, wow, okay, that's a little bit more than I anticipated, but, you know, it's not. But to me, it was not the realm of what it probably should have been for a while, but I think in the past, we've been behind, probably.
Right, I agree.
Than a lot of other cities.
A long time.
Yeah. Go to Oregon City, go to Westland, go to Portland, and look at your business, and Milwaukee, and look at your business licenses.
The same for 20 years. I thought, well, I could stop for a year or two.
Yeah.
Westland, we pay, our business license fee is $40, and then we are also, we pay a street maintenance fee every month.
Right, you got an additional tax on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. We haven't got there yet.
Your turn.
Well, I don't really have anything. Just wanna thank everybody for coming. And I will mention, January 9th, I believe, I got an email about Police Officer Appreciation Day. County's putting on some kind of a deal, I don't know exactly what it is, but I'll just mention it. You know, I know we all do it, but when you see a police officer on January the 9th, thank him, shake his hand, let him know you care, tell him to be safe. It's simple enough, and it'll go a long way. So, I don't really have anything else. This is awesome.
They're coughing.
Oh, I gotta do this. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I also wanted to pass around, we have a sign-up sheet for something city council decided last, last year, coffee with the counselor. And what it is, is trying to arrange public meetings with citizens who have concerns, wanna talk to a counselor. We can't have, it has to be three or less council members at the meeting. They cannot take action on items, but they can listen, bring items back to city council if they think it warrants that. So we have a sign-up sheet with some dates, so I wanted to pass that around. If you don't, if you need to go home and look at a calendar, you can, I'll email this out, you can get back to me that way, to see which meetings you'd like to attend.
We've already, we're already on that, Tom. Unless you wanna add on.
With that, we good?
Yep.
Adjourned.
All right, everything's adjourned, thank you.
Oh, there you go. All right. But you need to wear a tie.